Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Board of Fire Commissioners' meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty four. I'd like to please rise for the pledge of Moment of silence for all the fallen, please. Thank you. Approval of prior many meeting minutes from April eleventh.
I second the emotion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Public participation for the first time. Anyone from the public like to speak or anybody online? Just use the raise your hand function. Anybody? Nobody online? Okay. Communications.
Monthly reports. I have a report from Chief Traumer through the months of April. Looking through his reports, everything is fine with me. Any questions from anyone else? And the chief's activities as well. You are one busy man. Chief Regina's training reports. Again, I like this. I love this new layout. It's just unbelievable. But the most thing that I'm impressed with is your monthly training report at all of the firefighters that are presently in school. The amount of individuals is just phenomenal. So my congratulation to all of these members who are attending school from this past January, and it looks like all the way through June of this year, I believe. Yes. So.
Can we just state the names?
You want to do that? Sure.
I would like to work. Thank you.
Let's go back through here. Let's see. Number one on the top of the list, January through May of this year, Daryl Olet, Oaklinder Kotecko, Juliana Belanger are attending the Connecticut Fire Academy for firefighter one training. Also, the Walgett Fire School from March through June. Ryan Rizzo is attending firefighter one as well at the Regional Fire School in Walgett. Firefighter two training, Hartford County School from January through April of this year. We had seven firefighters pass. Cassidy McNamara, Ryan West, Emma Sweeney, Pedro Velatoro, Samuel Martincheck, Maya Lunguna, Greg Jacobs, all firefighters passed. So congratulations to all of them. Firefighter two training, April first through May of this year, this month, James Lapierre, Gary Chow, attending the Connecticut Fire Academy. Firefighter one trainer, fire officer, one, excuse me. January through March. Tony Palazzi Company two has passed.
Fire officer.
Fire officer one, sorry, again. Fire instructor two training. Tony is also attending that class through May of this year from from March as well as Jeff Anderson. So, you know, my hat's off there. Each one of these individuals. It's just, it just goes to show that the members of this department not only want to advance their careers, but they also want to provide the best that they possibly can for the department and the residents of Newington. Go ahead, chief.
Just a quick comment. Captain Garofalo has also took the into safety officer class, but hasn't taken the test yet.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you as well.
That's a lot of training.
That's a ton of training.
Yeah.
That's a ton.
Thank you, chief.
I also have one other thing that I want to read this evening. Dated April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, to Chief Jeffrey Traumer regarding the Newington Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Award. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but this came from Katie Kiss, the president. And I'll just read the the first paragraph. Is my distinct pleasure and honor to inform you that the Newington Volunteer Fire Department is the two thousand and twenty four awardee of the Newington Chamber of Commerce's Public Safety Award in recognition of the department's service to the town in Newington. And each year, the chamber seeks to honor members of our community for their outstanding service and dedication to making Newington a better place for all of us to live and work. We believe the entire volunteer fire department embodies this criteria on a daily basis. As I have stated before, and I'll state it again, the command staff of this organization is just an outstanding group of individuals who have put forth a tremendous effort into making this department what it is. And obviously, that is a reflection also with its membership. So my hat is is off to Chief Traumer and the rest of the command staff for making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Ledger status.
To review the ledger status, the only thing that sticks out is fringe benefits that we overexpended. And I think we're going to talk about that later.
Are we talking about it right now?
Okay.
Because we have our liaisons here, so I think they should know.
Yeah.
So the fire department has a budget of over one point three million dollars. We take out the fire department salaries, the fringe benefits, and the fire marshal's budget, which is not part of the fire department. We end up with four hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty six dollars a year for the daily operations of the fire department. It's not a lot. Apparently, not us. We don't budget for the fringe benefits in the paper call. That number is given to us by the finance department. They underbudget. So as we increase in size to reach our target number of one hundred and fifty firefighters, which we're on around a hundred right now, they want to take out of our any any gaps in that fringe benefit out of our operations budget.
Which is only four hundred and thirty thousand for the year.
For the year. And that that comes training, repairs, maintenance, physicals, right, station repairs. It all comes out of that.
Right.
So I want to know why we're being penalized for increasing our departments where we should be and having to come up with with the gap out of our operations budget out of for the paper call.
So what seems to happen, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief? We we bumped the paper call up last year to get more interest, get more response to calls. And it seems like it worked very, very well. And the other thing that we can't predict or determine is fire responses. We've we've gone up about fifteen, eighteen percent in fire calls?
I don't know if these outcomes were the increase, but we have seen increases every year.
We have more certified firefighters that are being paid to go to the calls and.
So another question is, why do they take, why does finance want to take this out of our operating budget? Especially when we do the highway funds, we have what, some sixty thousand dollars in there? That goes back to the general fund.
Right.
Over the past eight years, the fire department has given back a hundred and four thousand, twenty nine dollars in paper call because we've never reached our budget number.
Right.
So why are we being penalized? I mean, at one point, they wanted to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the four hundred and thirty thousand that we have, which is twenty three percent of our day to day operation budget.
Yeah.
Almost a quarter of our operating budget that they want to move away from. It's just for doing one. Our stipend and our paper calls was.
Right.
It's getting members. And we're not even fully staffed. So there was no budget for growth.
Right.
There's no room for growth, no room for increased call line, which we're going to see definitely in the near future with all this department going on. And it just seems like as we grow, they're going to ding our operations budget for it.
Right.
Year after year. I just don't feel that we have that much wiggle. Especially with the way everything, cost increases, the physicals are increasing, maintenance is increasing.
Right.
So so we're being penalized for their improper forkage.
Budgeting, right.
Yeah, and it's and it's our first year with with a new paper call number. So but still, I mean, that's 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 a hit to us. Didn't want to take up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I also think this year there was kind of there was two things going on this year also that I think created a lot of this problem. We also had a five hundred dollar increase in the stipend checks.
Correct.
So I think it was budgeted incorrectly in terms of the stipend check increase plus the paper call increase at the exact same time.
Right.
And I just think it was underbudgeted. The other part of that is in the fringe benefit account, which we have no control over, is the pension funds. So we have no idea year to year what comes out and what goes into the pensions. We have no idea. Obviously, we see it being withdrawn out of the fringe benefits, but we don't put those numbers in the accounts.
Right.
Again, done by finance.
Right. And I like that statement that we do not control. The commissioners and the chiefs which do the budget. We 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 have nothing to do with that fringe benefit budget. Those numbers are given to us by the finance department.
It's also payroll also.
Right, payroll.
I I just find I just find it hard to understand and accept how now the finance department can turn around and penalize the fire department for their fiscal inability to project the correct numbers.
Do we know how much? What was budgeted was four hundred and twenty six thousand. Do we know what we prior year?
I don't have that information.
Excuse me, five hundred and twenty six thousand.
That's what current.
Fringe benefits, five, yeah, five, twenty, six, eight, seventeen.
Yeah, that's this year, correct. That ends July first.
Yep.
But we don't know.
For next, but for next year, we already being told that we are under. Yeah, we're.
And that was a budget that was just approved.
That was just approved with no wiggle room for any.
With no wiggle room for us to grow new members or certified members that graduate classes to be paid.
Or the increase in call line that we're going to see if the new apartment buildings coming in.
Right.
And whatnot. So.
Correct.
Yeah, there's a there's a lot of factors that are involved that that I don't think were taken into account when the numbers were established.
And the important, I think the important figure is what was that figure last year for the last budget? So we can see actually how much it went up.
That's what I was asking.
To this budget to last budget, did we, you know, just the five hundred dollars that the chief was talking about with the
Right, right.
Stipend program times, you know, roughly a hundred members. That's fifty thousand dollars.
At this point, we're at two hundred and ninety eight plus.
We heard tonight. We're getting them.
All night.
Significantly more than we did last year.
Seven fifty.
And I was going to think it's hurricane season first.
You could get one thunderstorm and have
We had all day long.
Have twenty calls with twenty people. That that that's a lot. You know, one tornado, one good thunderstorm could wipe things out. Sure.
But it's just concerning that that money would have to come out of our day to day operations of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is still very low for a day to day operating budget for a part of five stations.
Yeah, correct.
This department is doing stuff that no other departments in this area don't do it.
And and.
Well, they're trying to copy it.
Plus what was being done to offset costs. I mean, look at all the work that's been going into the grants.
Right.
And getting equipment and everything like that.
So I did some homework in the last couple of weeks and looked up fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budgets for some surrounding towns and West Hartford's budget for twenty four, twenty five proposed town manager budget. I'm not sure if they passed it yet. But just for the fire department, West Hartford Fire Department's budget for next year is proposed at fifteen point five million. I think New Britain is fourteen something million, Marinans fourteen million. I didn't even check Hartford. I'm sure that's in the twenties, twenty five millions, thirty millions. But for technically four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for operating budget minus salaries and fringe benefits, that's not very much. So. Oh, I did check Southington, which is comparable to us. They do have one station paid. And I think they were at nine million for next year's budget. So it's a lot of money compared to our.
Yeah, and it's you can't say, hey, don't respond.
No, no, you can't tell people not to respond.
Everybody gas, sure, you do it back in the seventies, you got the odd even.
Correct.
We can start sending guys out. Get odd days.
Right, right. Yeah, right.
Well, those.
And that's when we'll lose them.
Is exactly why we've got the site. That's why we started the site was to reimburse guys that for their gas they were using.
Just if the commission can address it with, you know, the town finance director, the town manager and so forth. Or to the council later, talk also, see if there's something that we can do.
Yeah, I I did make a phone call to the town manager's office. I haven't received the phone call back, so we'll we'll see where this list goes.
I ask a question. Do other departments have to offset their operating budget to something?
I couldn't answer that question. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, that's totally.
Probably not. That's why they're fifteen million.
I'm saying within our town.
Don't worry.
Oh, if you have, you know, police run same on us for cars, they run over. Do they have to take away from their budget to then pay it?
I don't. I can't answer that question. Can't answer that question. I don't know how that works. All right. Anything else on that?
On ledger status, yes. You want to bring that up, Frank, or do you want me to?
Oh. Yes. I would, looking at the ledger status and and considering what we're we're dealing with now, I would like to make a motion to add to either our agenda for next month. Have a discussion or an approval that starting July first, I would like to see ledger status on a monthly basis from the fire marshal's office. Fire marshal's budget is part of the fire department. And we have no idea what the fire marshal's office is spending on a monthly basis. As a commission, we have the fiscal responsibility to make sure, seeing as we're in this situation now, the fire marshal's budget, because it is technically part of the fire department's, I would like to see what is going on with the fire marshal's office. So with that being said.
I will put it on the agenda for next month.
Okay, and perfect.
Okay.
And that'll be under new business.
Business.
Under new business. Thank you.
Thank you.
So most of you approve the ledger.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right on. Okay, old business. There you go, chief. Radio system update. Where do we stand today? Let's hope we have a little bit of goodness, maybe a little bit.
Yes, and as of Tuesday this week, Norcom and C G S were coming to an agreement with the templates. It looks like hopefully by next Tuesday, everything will be approved. So we'll be able to get the test portables to start testing on the system and actually start. The department will get four portables, will do some testing. All the town departments are going to be testing just to make sure that the code plugs are correct, though every extract in the system. And they'll be good. They're going to lock two weeks of testing. Once those two weeks are, then they're going to start production. And what means production means start installing radios of, we're going to start with the police department. And then they're going with the fire department and the rest will move forward after that. Somewhat of good news.
Yeah.
But again, we'll 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 see how it transitions.
See what happens.
By next week, we'll have the test portals. And then we'll.
Now, who's getting that? Police, fire?
Every organization in town will get one day. Oh, the C G S wanted it, or I shouldn't say C G S, Blue Wing, which is the consultant, put out a list of how many departments want it. We did four. Most departments are happy for it, just to be able to put them out, see how it works. It's just portals, no more rules, just portals. And then we'll we'll test it, we'll train that type of stuff.
Good.
Looks like it's in a positive direction. Connectivity for the Callahan site has been approved. It's actually in the works, so the fiber is going up there. That was part I T work on that. We kind of gave them the idea of who to go with. So they're working on that actually right now. That should be done, I can say, within the next couple of weeks. And then the other thing is the Callahan site. We're kind of holding off a little bit right now because of the death of Freddie Callahan. Kind of let let it slide a little bit, and then we're going to want to talk to Amber, who's now the controlling person up there for a new lease agreement that's going to go up there. That'll have to go to the town, the town manager. Everybody will have to approve that. But that's going to be the work coming soon.
Okay.
Good stuff, hopefully, in the near future.
Good. Thank you.
Still anticipate probably.
September.
It depends on how quick the install goes. I mean, I'd say if the P D starts in June, we'll probably start in the beginning of July. I'd say by middle of July, I'd say the end of July, we'll, the fire department will be ready to go. Full system townwide, you're probably looking at Septemberish.
Good. Coming down the home stretch.
It's just there's been delays here and delays there.
Understandable.
Kind of handpicked.
Yep.
On the other part of that, in talking about the radio system, the L T R system is having some major issues over the last.
That's the system.
And it's a system that we currently operate off of today. There has actually been quite a few failures, to be honest with you. We actually had an extrication in the middle of the extrication on Cedar Street. The entire town lost their radio communications because they were trying to switch towers because they started hearing some noise that was affecting the channels as they were doing it. It got locked in the middle. So it was actually both towers turned on at the exact same time and actually caused the system to crack.
Okay.
So at one point, the police department was actually using cell phones to communicate. And that was a period of probably about a half hour to an hour before Marcus could come out and did it back up and running. But there has been some major hiccups lately. A lot of interference has been happening. And it's.
Well, I think I asked you that question, why they were changing towers. And I had asked you, are they changing towers because they're testing on the new system? I didn't know. And you said, no, it's because the old system is is falling apart.
It's not borrowed time, so we're just crossing our fingers to get to the finish line.
Yeah.
They're switching it so often, it's causing problems for both of them.
The other thing, as we said in the past, the minute they switch over to the high school tower, you lose the cell path.
Right.
Because it's at a lower elevation like Callahan.
Pretty much from like Lowell's down. Just.
No, a little bit further.
Payne Road down.
We're talking probably in the Littleborough area, shady old.
Okay.
Moonlight down that way.
Yes.
More deep south there.
Okay.
Not so much like we're using, but.
All right.
So, yeah, we're crossing our fingers.
Cross our fingers. Let's all get a few more months out of it.
We have some suit, suit camps and strength.
There you go. Anything else, chief? Brand updates?
No, as of this point, we do continue to look for some grants. Commissioner DeMayo gave me a contact for historical properties, but I don't know if that will apply here. I have to talk to the chief a little bit more on that.
Did we ever do anything with the grant from F S B?
That got, they were unable to get community funding put together. So right now, that grant fell through. So we got a notification from
Because then they send us one that we did get it and then.
They, so they couldn't through with the new station that they normally do, they couldn't get any grant funding, whether it be workshops or events that they were willing to sponsor. So we went through it this time. So I think we're on their list as an approved grant.
Grant.
But at this point.
Nothing yet.
Nothing. I do know that the Senate or the House Representative voted today to fund the safer grants in the fire.
I hope it was yesterday.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yesterday, yeah.
I know, I just, I read the article last year.
That's federal. That was, that's federal.
Yeah.
That's federal, not state.
They voted, yeah, they voted to to.
Because they say
I guess that I read.
If that didn't get funded, they say, yeah, that's billions, like billions of dollars.
Because that was, I guess, a danger of not being funded.
Correct.
So I've kind of been following that.
Good.
Did vote for that. I guess we just keep keep our fingers crossed and hope we can fix our money.
Excellent. Thank you. Update tablets? Transition? Alpine, anything chief to report? Going well?
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape. I did notice something that I spoke to the chiefs about. He's got me looking at it. It popped up on my screen. They just added a new feature that we have that is called Department Documents. And if you sign into Red Dead Max now, Chief Traumer's email on Memorial Airport, all the captains posted there. Within the next few weeks, everyone's app on their phone will have a new line in there that says Department Documents.
Oh, cool.
So from the chief's perspective, Chief Traumer can post important documents.
Right.
And leave them out there and.
Perfect.
They're on your phone anytime you want.
Chief, since this is pretty much up and done, and do you want to keep this on or periodically update us, or do we need to have it on anymore?
I'll keep you updated for something new.
Something new comes along? So we'll take that off of old business, old business?
Yeah, that's right.
We'll take the, we'll take that off old business. Chief.
Just just so everybody knows, we're also in negotiations with surrounding towns to try to make it a regional mindset, which would mean that what their information would merge with our information. And if we go to a fall, say, in Rocky Hill, Berlin, Walthamshire, we're now using the system, even Cromwell, who was using it. We would be able to see their hydrants. We'd be able to see their cat system. So we're trying to do it as a group so that now we can all interact with each other as we come into each other's towns. Makes it much easier to be able to find hydrants. Houses.
Right, absolutely. Nice.
It's actually a really good tool that all of us are using. And, you know, good discussions with all the towns for it.
It's not a major cost to town. Last time they spoke, it was five thousand dollars. Out of that, that was Chief Stagmire, the chief of the Plainfield Department. It reached out to me and they want to switch from E S L to Elway, that way. Waste systems.
Wow. Good thing you retired, chief. It's a good thing you retired from your main job. I'd just like to comment on this for a quick second. This was a project, I think, maybe just about got started when you came in, Commissioner DeMayo. And I know this has been a two or three year project. It's been huge for the department. Bobby, you kind of took it under your wing and it was your baby.
Well, it was that. So not only was Chief Traumer instrumental in that happening, but also he kind of helped on the bay monitors, the finger rectification.
Yes, there's a lot of hands in.
A lot of hands. And now, I think I talked, talked to you yesterday, Martin Wall has been stepped up. We succession plan. I now have somebody who I feel comfortable, you know, if for some reason I'm not here.
But. Okay.
There's a lot of things that happened that we did in the background, a lot of things that we did in the back, and it's not. I appreciate it, but there's a lot of people like that.
And I would like to personally thank them all. I'm going to use a little tidbit that a couple of you are going to laugh at, but boy, oh, boy, have we come a long way from ripping run in the firehouse. There might be a few here that remember Chief Lapierre, Chief Regina, Johnny, Chief Commissioner Stoddard. So it was a huge project, a huge undertaking, and and I thank you all very much, all the hands. And awesome. And we're a model. Once again, we're a model to other towns around us that are taking parts of our Alpine program that they had and adding it to their departments. That are taking parts of our Alpine program that they had and adding it to their departments. Because of the foresight of our chiefs that, to make that program even better, so, thank you.
I also want to, so everybody knows too, the security of this system is, is over the top. Meaning that no one can just go in and get credit for all or whatever, like back in the day, potential students, I don't know if it's right or name it. Now you actually have to fingerprint it into the system. You actually, everything's locked and secure. So no one can look through anybody's records unless it's you individually.
Right, and I believe it also takes a picture of the person when you fingerprint it, so.
And it's all audited a hundred percent, so anytime you're in the system, it's timestamped and the person.
They can tell when they're here, you did it wrong, I can tell, you know.
Everything about it. So that's another positive.
Right, so that kind of goes back to our paper call that we talked about briefly earlier, that. You know, back in the day, you went to a fire, hey, Joey, check me in, I got a party to go to. Well, that doesn't happen anymore. Um, you can't have anybody check you in, you can't have anybody write you down, you have to literally go back to the firehouse. Thumb in with your fingerprint, it recognizes your fingerprint and gives you credit for the call, so. It's total one hundred percent transparency.
Everyone's training in other events, meetings, there's, there's all, you know, other functions that it does, you know, it's used for, and we have had a couple of issues where. Somebody did check in that didn't attend, and that was taken care of by personnel.
Right, thank you. Big job, thank you, thank you very much from the commission, appreciate it.
And I can, I, I, as, as a light, lighter side to that, I, I can speak to experience. Um, cause when I came in this evening, I tried to thumb in to go to the meeting and it denied my request, so it does work.
Thank you, Chief. We'll take that off next month, share it, thank you. Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget review. Um, we submitted our budget. I don't believe we've had a commissioners' meeting since the last, uh, since the budget was approved. Um, I'd just like to thank the town council for all your hard work. Uh, we submitted a very fiscal, responsible budget to the town of Newington this year. Uh, yes, we got a couple of upgrades, very minor, minor, um, dollar amount. Uh, and, and it was due to, um, safety for our firefighters with some hose testing. Uh, one emergency room visits, ten grand, and, um, we felt this was necessary and, um, also to have it. Have an outside company, documentation, do our hose testing, um, so thank you on that. Um, other than that, uh, some very, very, very minor, we went up two point nine nine percent on our budget. And it, it's just very minor, so, you know, when you only had a million bucks, two point nine nine percent's only about forty thousand dollars, so, um, thank you. Thank you, town council and the mayor, and we appreciate it. We do a lot with a little, so we do a lot, a lot with a little. Billing per call, we kind of already beat that one up.
I think so.
Okay, yeah. Sale of old engine one, any word?
So right now it's actually on, um. Commission, I think it's, well, it's called, uh, it's out for six months. Herman's posted it on a, um. Like an equipment sale for fire trucks. Uh, it's there for six months. If it doesn't sell, we take it back. There's no cost to it. Um, and hopefully we can get something from it. Uh, Herman thought this was the best spot for it, uh, to try to get the best bang for buck to the town. Uh, so again, uh, we originally had reached out to the, the company that had bought the old rescue one. The guy was in negotiations for a little bit, and I just decided that, that he didn't want to do it.
All right.
So Herman's is aggressively working it, uh, so. I can, uh, reach out to him in the next few days.
See what happens.
But, yeah, it's kind of sick.
I just bought a new car, so I don't need it. Do you need it, Frank?
No, no.
Take it to the grocery store or lights and sirens work?
Yeah, no kidding. Realistically, Chief, what, um, what do you think that that?
It's hard to say because, uh, the problem is, is it depends on the market. You know, if the department really wants something, it could, they could take, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars and buy it. It could be worth five, ten thousand dollars. It all depends on who comes in at the time and what they need.
Okay.
And it could also get into a bidding where we have multiple people and it just goes up from there. So it's, it's really tough to say.
I'm just very surprised no one's taking it just for the engine.
Yeah, no kidding.
You know, cause it's a non-diff, you know, engine, so.
It's a tough market.
Yep. All right, thanks, Chief. Space needs, company three and company four, and we'll just, well, let's start with space needs, company three and company four, that's.
So I did send you guys the memo that, that you guys had requested last, uh, meeting. I sent that to you a couple of days after the commissioners' meeting. Uh, I know you guys wanted to discuss it here before it, before it over. Uh, the big discussion right now is that the West Hill property is actually for sale next to company three's. And I think it's a huge opportunity to town, the fire department, and everybody involved, to make sure that we secure that piece of property. Even if we do nothing with it right now and just sit on it for a couple of years. It would be beneficial for the expansion of company threes down the road. The town could do other things that use properties, uh, you know. I know they're looking for an emergency operations center, uh, spot. I mean, that would be a perfect fit, kind of do the expansion of threes and emergency operations center at the exact same time. I know there's money in the budget, I know they're looking at different things. I know there's been discussions at executive session. We haven't been pretty to any of that information, so I don't know what the discussions are. But I think it's very important to discuss West Hill Road property.
Mm-hmm.
And then in conjunction with that, then we have Chapman Street. What we're gonna do with Chapman Street, does the town wanna do, you know, give it up? Do they wanna renovate it? I mean, in my eyes, it's a great storage for us, but if we can do something and expand company threes, then we may not need Chapman Street. So it all depends on the moving parts, and I think there needs to be a major discussion between everybody.
All the players, yeah.
Where everybody is.
Yep, I agree.
Obviously, that's on the forefront right now because it's for sale. But our priority, obviously, that's our top priority, to get the land.
Right.
But again, company fours, we need to do something there.
So that, that same thing happened down in the south end with Station Two.
Correct.
And, uh, we were able to, uh, we bought the, the house next door to Station Two, went up for sale. I believe it was two thousand, don't hold me to the, I'm trying to remember, two thousand two, two thousand three. Um, we were able to purchase the property next door to Station Two and add on two bays to Station Two, uh, less, cost about a million bucks. That opened in two thousand five, six, two thousand six. Uh, and thank God we did, because look what's happening to the south end of town.
And I hate to say it, that's what's gonna happen in the north end.
Yes, because I know there has been talk about the. That whole West Hill area, and I've watched some TPZ meetings where Spring Street and all in and around there, incorporating Day Street, so. Just remember, that firehouse was built in seventy-six for fire trucks that were built in the seventies. Well, you know, we have bigger fire trucks these days and. So it, it, it's definitely needed.
I also think that there needs to be discussion on what can be done with the property, because there's weapons behind the property that's for sale. That's a whole nother piece, you know, what can be developed back there, what can be.
Right.
Those, those are all discussions that really need to be addressed sooner than later.
Okay.
Um, because I, I don't wanna lose the property. If there's an opportunity for us to secure it.
Okay.
So I'll ask our council liaison, should we, um, schedule to get on your agenda to discuss this, the commission?
Or is that just something through the town man?
I don't know if that would be an executive session or, uh, I would say. Schedule, schedule an executive session so you can have this conversation.
Okay.
It should be a public session, is that it? If you wanna buy it, you can, if you wanna buy it, the price is one up.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
So we'll, we'll talk to James?
No.
Jamie. Jamie, okay.
Okay.
Get her, okay. All right. All right.
That needs to be done sooner.
Anything else on that? All right. Uh, new business, um. Um, we were, we waited on this, we usually do this February, March timeframe. When we're hunkered down for the winter, um, but since we had the, uh, appointment of a new deputy chief. We held off a little bit, but I think it's time that, uh, we do some chiefs evaluations, Commissioner.
I think so too.
Okay, yeah, in agreement, all right, so I will.
So we'll start with the self-evaluation.
We'll start with the self-evaluation, we'll send them out to all the chiefs and then, um. We'll give you a month, so, uh, we'll meet in, uh, June sometime, so we can get this wrapped up before, uh, summer vacations, so.
Yeah.
Okay, chiefs, all right, thank you. That's it for new business. Uh, public participation for the second time. Anybody like to speak from the public? Anybody online like to speak? Kim?
Uh, yeah, just one quick question. Uh. We talked about company three, and, and I know, I, I, I know how long we've been talking about, we've also been talking a long time about company four and. It's, it's on the agenda, any ideas that have been floated, anything that?
The hard part without a, without a permanent building committee, that kind of puts, it kind of handcuffs us. But really, i- if we were gonna renovate the place, it would probably the best spot would be where it is. We don't, I mean, we don't wanna take over the park, we don't even want discussions on the park. Um, the best.
Thank, thank you for making that very clear, Chief.
And, and, and I've heard that.
We, we do not want the park.
We do not want the park. If, if we were gonna do anything at company four, the best solution there would be a two bay, uh. Fully, you know, tear down and build up, put two bays on the bottom and everything upstairs. It would have to be a second floor. Uh, the problem is, the property over there, we never secured the property next to it.
Yeah.
And when we didn't secure that, it just gives us a smaller footprint, so that we really can't go sideways, we really can't go back. We can only go up. But there's plenty of room to do a two bay if we had to, and then go to a second floor with all six of those. The other option is, obviously we look at, you know, company fives and possibly do something over there. It's still close enough to company fours that we could possibly do something there too. But again, there's limited spaces in both. Yeah.
So we definitely got ISO rating.
And, and again, that's, that's the other big part is the ISO rating. We move a firehouse that sometimes takes away from your rating. Just because of the distance it takes to get to a park. Because where company four is situated, it's quick to go right through to Britain to Cedar Street versus not area, it doesn't be spot. It's just how, how long it takes to get somewhere, it's always rated.
And you just mentioned the ISO rating, uh.
So the ISO rating, actually, Chief Regina just reached out to the, uh, rep to start scheduling some meetings. We're hoping to have a review July first. Um, Chief Steigmeyer, Chief Regina has worked out very, uh, with MDC to get the hydrants flow tested like we have requested. Uh, who is also working with the rep from ISO to indicate exactly which hydrants they need, which will actually help us with the MDC points for, for us. Which should increase that score for us, cause that was one of the sections that actually hurt us last time, was because of the flow testing on the hydrants. Because they were, again, flow testing hydrants has to be within five years of the actual review. Some of them dated all the way back to nineteen ninety-five. So now we're trying to get all of those updated, and the ISO rep has been very helpful with that and working directly with MDC. Chief Steigmeyer reached out directly to some of that MDC and we have, uh, they said they do all the testing. And again, cross our fingers, we're looking in really good shape to go to a class two, so.
Chick-fil-A CEO.
Is MDC supposed to do their firehards? I remember as a kid, they used to come and do that all the time.
So what they do is, they do hydrant flushing.
Oh, okay.
They don't do hydrant flow tests. So flow test means that they actually hook up the gauge to it.
And see how.
And see how much water comes out of it and that's what pressure applies there. So two different.
Maybe it's the flushing that was staying.
Yeah, so flushing, they regularly come out and.
Brush the water, like you knew your hot water tank.
Right, right.
Versus actually putting what we call a fetal gauge on it, which actually reads the PSI and the water coming out of it. You have to have a certain pressure depending on the frequency areas. We look at hotels, like bigger businesses that.
Have you ever had a problem where the, the pressure hasn't been sufficient?
I've never had any problems, you know, that I'm aware of. But again, it, it comes down to, you know, they do the test and it just sits there. I mean, we don't see the test.
Yeah, we don't see it, yeah. So we don't even know if it's, I don't know, it's not, cause we don't see it.
Correct.
And they wouldn't tell us if they have.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Right, and that's big money we spend, give the MDC every year that, to, to do this.
Part of it is, I, I wrapped my ass over, I said, they don't do it. She's got the tools, we'll go out on our own.
She really wants to, yeah. That's cool.
Yeah. He said there's been a year, she said, June, July.
So we're looking to actually, you have to have a year between reviews. Our last review was July of last year. So we have to wait a full year, so it's July of this year.
That's if they, they have to consider it.
Again, and it's a consideration before they actually do it.
Cause if, if there's not enough there.
How many years is the rate last?
Um, five years. But in the first year of your review, if you wanna challenge or redo it.
Yes.
You have that opportunity. So seeing that we were as close as we were to a two, we said that we're gonna work harder to get right level. And you're only talking minimal points that we've definitely have worked very hard to get to that point.
Chief, how many hydrants do they have to test?
Thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Wow.
Thirty-five hydrants. And I actually give you a list of the actual hydrants, where they are, the ones that are needed for their review.
Nice, oh, wow.
How many hydrants do you have? I'm just wondering, is, is it percentage?
I thought there was a number like six hundred, I thought. I think it's like six hundred.
I think I know someone with your ping right now.
G, G I S, G I S, yeah, it's like six hundred.
I think we can run a report on that.
I think the biggest thing with the, uh, with the flow testing in the specific areas is for like higher occupancies.
Okay.
And so you go, commercial areas, that type of stuff.
Yeah.
They don't so much do it in a residential area, it would be like condos.
Schools, hospitals.
Yeah.
They test it, in July they'll test everything over again, just to think you, you can prove.
So what, ISO, the lady from ISO will give a list of what needs to be tested. That was handed to MDC RA.
No, no, I mean, when, when you go for the ISO rating.
They, we, the report has to go directly to them, from MDC.
Yeah, I'm not talking fire, it's, they test everything else?
Oh, yeah.
And they do the whole thing all over again, or just the areas you've improved, you say?
Ev- everything goes, just looked at all over again.
So there, there's other areas, constantly that we've improved on or tracked, like, the, the report that.
Yeah.
Commission's showing some of our activities, we're paying a lot more attention to things that in the past, as we were driving training as an example. We were just doing driving training, they track it, but we weren't putting it down.
The community engagement, we actually track how many we actually reach out to. Yes.
That's part of, that's part of the fire map, so.
Wow, fire prevention, right?
Yeah, training at the tower as opposed to training here. You get way more points for the tower training.
That makes sense though.
The regional stuff too, also included toward that, like, so, uh, other activities that we've been doing, the stuff that we've done with West Harker, the stuff that we're getting with our task. We're putting that all.
But rescue stuff, does?
The rescues.
And, and you're trying with rescue? Does not help.
Doesn't help.
Really?
It's, it's focused on, it's like buildings and construction.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because that's.
For property, that's not property.
So our drills, we focus our drills more for those areas now.
I think so, most of the drilling.
So much. So much. On the twentieth?
Yes, I did send the list out, uh, so there was three drills. There's two night drills and there's one day. You did get that one? But we encourage you guys to then, just so you can see where we're going. And we can also do your riding and trucking.
No, not yet, oh. Oh yeah, we are, we are, okay, yes, we are. And that, those were Kim's questions. Anything else, Kim?
No, I'm I'm fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief.
Just a couple of things. Uh, we recently received our thermal imagers, uh, which is our personal thermal imagers that will be on every Scott pack. Uh, we're working through inventory notes right now and those should go online and say within the next month or so. Uh, we have to get a month in the apparatus. We're looking very forward to those. Um, a lot of good training has been going online with those with situational awareness for firefighters. Um, they've actually stated that with those thermal imagers, they have a hundred percent um, proof that. Any firefighter has it will get out of the building comfortably without having any harm to themselves. It's a huge safety thing for us. Plus it helps us locate fires quicker and so forth. So there's a lot to them, but. I, like I said, I want to appreciate the town council for approving that through our funds. That's huge for us. Um, the other thing is the SIMS device, which will be tracking of the Scott packs that's due in May. With it, they're gonna come out and do the upgrades, but hopefully we'll have that online soon. Um, and also, uh. This past week or the week before, I can't remember now, we had training with Berlin. Uh, trying to get a relationship with them for the Berlin turnpike. There's a lot of development going in at both of our towns and we're trying to get them to, you know, we're trying to do pre-plan together. So that they can look at our building, they can look at their buildings and kind of come up with a. Plan, just in case we have something large in all these areas. So that discussion went very well the other night with Berlin. And I appreciate them coming down and uh, having the discussion of this.
And also we'll hope for our ISO rating, because now that we'll have this agreement in place with them. That the chief has, you know, organized that um, that will come also.
Awesome, right. Does that also, does that also take into consideration under ISO? The um, mutual aid that we are now performing with West Hartford? Funny you mention that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just in case you missed it the other night, we were written out a really big fire. You heard sirens coming through Newington? It wasn't uh, Newington, it was Hartford.
Yeah.
Hartford Avenue to Cedar Street to.
Yeah, and we had a fire truck within a mile of the.
They actually had two working parts.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a biggie high street.
I bet West Hartford could use a thermal. No, at at the golf course, they could have used those thermal imagers.
So um, just since that was brought up um, quick before I end, well, I can wait to look, Commissioners. I'll wait till Commissioners remarks. Any other public participation? Yes.
I just wanted to say in regards to the conversation we had earlier about pulling over for the P for all. Um, there's been many years that, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, did we get back?
Yeah, I mentioned that.
So nobody, not you guys, not us, not, I mean, no one can decipher how many calls the fire department's gonna get. And, you know, we don't know what weather feature what's gonna come through. When I drive around town, I see a lot more construction going up. That's gonna bring in more calls. So we really need to sit down in the fact that we've just got a budget approved and this is happening. I think it needs to definitely be addressed. And the door swings both ways. So obviously if we're under, we, you know, you guys gave it back. But if there's years that you're gonna go over, I don't think it's fair to say that. It has to come out of operate. We have to figure out another way to.
I think we all agree with.
All agree. Let's hope we don't have a very wet spring, summer, because then we'll do all these cellar pump outs, so.
Chris, Crystal, I absolutely positively agree with you. One of the, one of my biggest pet peeves and and I'll state it again. And I've stated it before, I, I still have a hard time understanding why, when the fire department. And the example is the sale of a piece of fire apparatus, whatever we get, whether it's even five dollars or ten thousand dollars. I I still cannot understand why that money needs to go back into the general fund. That there can't be a separate budget or an account that goes back to the fire department. For emergency use in in the terms of purchasing.
Over the past eight years, that's been returned.
Right.
Maybe it should have been.
And and we can't, and we don't seem to have someone being able to account for where that money ends up. And why it doesn't get continued as part of our budget. I I just, I have a hard time understanding. That part of how finances work.
I think that for us, it's gonna address very quickly and figure it out because we're calling it to another budget.
Right, no, absolutely, absolutely agree.
Based on that, Craig, do we know how much was budgeted for next year?
Okay, oh, I don't have it on me. I, I will, we'll get back to you.
Is that the sheet you gave us?
No.
Oh.
If I'm not mistaken, it's the exact same number that was this year.
And we're already under this year.
Whatever the number is, five twenty seven.
Five twenty, five twenty-six.
Five twenty-six, eight seventeen.
So there's absolutely no more room in there for gross for next year. So if we bring, if we bring ten firefighters in and they're certified. So that's, that's twenty thousand not off the bat for stipends, because it's two thousand bucks a piece. And that's not including their costs. So we're behind the eight ball already. Fascinating, right? Okay, all right, Chief Regina.
I think I told you this, but I'd just like to make everybody aware, but we um, Captain Anderson and I met this week with the. Uh, VA and the contractors, they're getting ready to do work for the old power tower used to be at the VA. There's a a hump house building that's there that replaced that when they redid all the work on Cedar Street and the water capacity for that, for that facility. Uh, it's a confined space and because of what happened in West Haven, the VA has requested our presence on scene. The morning of the the day of work, they just came back to us with three dates that we have to come back to, go back to them and say. Uh, we're good for those dates. We'll meet them at seven in the morning, get set up uh, with our crews, with the tack. Um, and when the contractor goes in the the hole, we're ready to go in and handle that confined space. Um, so that will be coming up the next couple of weeks. We're ready to go over it. We'll have a a crew put together. Captain Anderson will be there, I'll be there. Um, and then, you know, we've got medical staff and I'll let that be there on site, you know. Um, the other thing that came out of that is um, Dean, who is our contact at the VA. Um, reached out to me and asked about um, easements on Veterans Drive. And I connected him with Chris in engineering and Chris and he have started a conversation because their VA is expanding. And they're gonna be putting fiber runs all the way up Veterans Drive, because they need redundancy for what they're doing in the facility as it's growing. And uh, they're gonna remove all the lighting from the side of the street where it's on the athletic field side to the opposite side of the street. And they need to know, you know, property lines and all that, so that occurred based on us being on their talking.
Nice call.
And um, we also got a, they, we need something, they said, uh, reach out.
Excellent. So we, see what, Chief take care of that, what Chief up here, great. Thank you.
Just one more thing I apologize. Uh, I just want to thank all the members that are involved with recently last Friday and now tomorrow. We have prom promise at the high school, uh, members have been participating and teaching kids about, you know, drunk driving during the prom. Last week's went out very, very well. Life Star landed. Uh, it was a great presentation. Tomorrow we're having another one. That's for the senior class. Last week was for the junior class. So hopefully with the weather, uh, we'll see, hopefully Life Star will land again tomorrow. But it's just a huge thing between the public safety organizations to get together, you know, promote it.
That's everybody, police, fire, EMS.
So it saves one life.
One life, one life.
And I also want to thank the uh, the guys that have been going out doing the community engagement. There's been a lot of uh, activities over the last couple of months. With the high school, there's been multiple things with career fairies and everything that's been happening. Uh, they've been doing quite a bit. We've been doing some birthday drive-bys. We've, we've been busy. So I can't thank them enough. They've been really working hard.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Anything else, public participation? Go, Nico.
Uh, just from. Say, for the president. And the, the, the council for the arm of funding for the chief, uh, for the old firehouse, for the boiler replacement. Too precious to lose and the fireler has critical.
Yeah.
And the boiler uh, is original to the building, so.
That's old. Nineteen twenty-nine.
That's older than me.
That's older than you.
Speaking of which, I did see, uh, I think, what was it, last week, Environmental Services was there. So that, that must be for the remediation.
So did you gain like an extra thousand square feet after? Cause that thing had to be like the size of this room.
I'll tell you one thing, it came out, the whole monster full of.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
They had to take the entire boiler because it was built, it was built with asbestos, so they can't even scrape it off. They just took the whole boiler off us.
Oh, they did.
Really? That's interesting.
We appreciate that and the support from the town. Parks has been doing the landscaping for us, the towns.
It's a gem.
Yeah, yeah.
All because they wanted to put a sign up on the north side of CVS. That's why it was gonna get knocked down. Yeah.
Well, on the eighteenth, y'all can help show up because we're gonna have a cleanup.
There you go. All right. Anything else under public participation?
I just, I want to thank everyone who had any part in the pasta dinner last Saturday. I had friends um, coming up, they came up from Brooklyn and unfortunately he had to go to. Do some work, but his wife is another who's trained in my camp. She had no idea what she was getting into, you know, Brooklyn, New York. Don't you guys have fundraisers in past years? She had a wall, she met a lot of folks. I thought it was great. I hope you all made a good amount of money.
I I'd like to comment on that, um, Counselor, Kim, um, from what you said. To me, a- and and I think you hit the nail on the head and uh, Counselor Mankey, thank you for showing up for company three and supporting them. But to me, it was like, i- it wasn't even like supporting a fire department or anything. Yeah, that's what the main goal was. But I felt like it was Newington's family in my old high school cafeteria. Okay, and we were just all enjoying a plate of pasta and everybody was talking and, you know. Yeah, nobody had to cook and, you know, it just felt like good Newington. In a big cafeteria and everyone was just having a ball. Yeah, well, I made, I made my aunt laugh a few times from my old, from my dad, God rest his soul, but that was pretty funny.
I heard some counselors got a chance to play with the uh, or try, don't say, try out.
Emma Sweeney did an excellent job of handling it. She was doing the pass. Things for the extinguisher, she was showing everybody, she had a crowd, she was into it. That it was perfect and thank you counselors for, you know, some, some of them attempted to use it, did well. There was a little game going on, including a couple of them. Sherco was there. See, you would, I don't know if you had money to stand on a bed or something. That was, it was good. That, that, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, it was a lot of.
I'd like to comment if I could.
Yes, Commissioner.
It, Emma Sweeney, when she joined the department, she used to come into the, come to our meetings and come into the day room. And sit in the corner with her head down. Yeah, she's come such a long way. She's such a good person. She's. She's so, you know, outgoing and doing stuff and being involved and, and that's, that's a great thing about this department. And you always call it a family. We are a family. We've helped her develop, helped her become who she is. But also on the, the pasta dinner, um, i- it's a company three event, but. There's members from all.
Plainville, Farmington.
Well, no, actually, they're working. I mean, here Kurt's there as our DJ. People from company two, people from company uh, one were there, you know, it's, it's become, it's become a big family event.
Certainly yes.
And people come and stay.
Yeah, they don't leave.
We, we never had to set up tables all the way to the back of the cafeteria before.
They stayed, they stayed.
It was, it was a good event.
Wow, that's a lot.
Do you know how, how much?
I haven't asked my wife yet.
She knows.
I, I do, but I don't know if I should share.
And it was some cool stuff, a lot of sports teams, uh, Pittsburgh Steelers and. Yeah, pretty interesting stuff. It's a great, like, and and I'll always say it, you know, this is a big family, family sticks together and um. Kudos for company three for keeping it going. It was pretty sad when we couldn't do it during the COVID years, but uh.
It's back.
It's back and back and it's bigger than ever, really. Anything?
We had four hundred and eighty-nine.
That's a lot of pasta. There you go, there you go. I was trying to sit in my seat where I usually sat when I was in high school, but that's where the raffle was, so I couldn't sit there. Anything else under public participation? That's it. Public participation, go once, twice, three times. Commissioners' remarks. We'll start to my left, Commissioner Stoddard, as I do everyone.
We could mix it up once in a while.
No, 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 we keep going.
We um, actually, I don't have a lot to say. I think that things have really gone well. I'm glad to see the. Red Ant RMX is, is moving along. I'm glad to see the radios are, hopefully we can get the radios done once before the old system dies. Uh, you know, I'm, I, you know, there's a lot going on and I'm.
A lot of good stuff.
I'm always excited to see everybody participating, being part of it and uh, it, it. It makes me feel good. That's enough.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, there. Well, um, you know, most everybody has, you know, s- stolen a lot of the thunder tonight because we all talked about. The family, we talked about the pasta dinner, so I really don't have an awful lot to say other than what I, what I normally say to this. Um, at the end of this meeting is that um, it, it amazes me on a daily basis what this department does. Um, and being a family, um, how we all seem to do what is right for the community. So um, my hat's off to uh, every member of this department. And I love the fact that we are moving forward at a, at a very rapid pace. Um, I just want to be able to see that um, us as a commission, uh, work a lot closer with uh, the town council. And the town manager to get a lot of these issues uh, looked at and addressed expediently. Um, especially um, in terms of the space needs between company three and especially company four. Um, you know, we've been talking about this for a while. Uh, my fear is that. No matter how much we talk about it on a monthly basis, if the, if the town council. And this building committee doesn't get up and running, it's still gonna take us anywhere from three to five years. Before we actually see work starting on a building, somewhere, shape or form. You have to have engineering reports, you have to have an architect, you have to have permits, you know, and all of these things. You gotta have the money, but all of this, all of, all of this takes time and it's not gonna happen overnight. So if we don't start today, we're still not gonna see anything for at least five years. And and we're already ten years behind the eight ball, so, you know, somebody.
Frank, based on, based on that, um, you know, maybe the. Frank, based on, based on that, um, you know, maybe the town council could, uh, since they've set an example with, uh, John Wallace School, that they can establish a, a, a building committee, maybe they could establish a building committee for Company Four, sure. Just, just a thought.
Alrighty, uh, so I, that's enough for me.
I just got a couple of things, cause I'm not gonna, uh, I, kudos to what everybody said, but I I can't believe this hasn't been brought up today and that I have to bring it up. That, last month, we went to West Hartford, how many times, Chief, five? Four or five, four or five, five times, and and Avon once.
Two of the times West Hartford, two fires.
Two fires.
Yes, ladder and an engine, yes, because they've been, um, stretched West Hartford, um, they've been very busy and they've called us five times into West Hartford and Chief Lapierre, thank you. I know you, that you take that under your belt and take care of that, Station Three on the Britton Avenue. I know one time, all that they went, they were called to a work and fire on Farmington Avenue.
Yep.
At an apartment building, so thank God Newington was there, I think Newington and Hartford and UConn.
Hartford was actually running the job, the district chief was running.
As West Hartford was tied up with all their. Yeah.
The Hartford chief was very impressed with our leadership, everybody's ready to go. Dressed, packed up, with a tool in their hand, ready for an assignment and they were.
Just, just so that people are aware, um, we have great relations with West Hartford, they're a very, very good department, but they're stretched too, like everybody, and they get one work and fire and it dumps the whole town and that's when we come into play, so. Um, a- and then we got called to Avon for an apartment building, I, I, I took part because I drove Engine Two and it was at six thirty or something at night, seven, around seven o'clock, we went to Avon and we stayed there for about three and a half hours, four hours till they got back. So we're going everywhere.
That was part of the reason.
Dumb telling that, West Hartford never invited us for.
Up until a couple of years ago, right, yeah.
And West Hartford went to the Avon job too.
It was, Starford went to the Avon job, so. You know, the days of, uh, you know, you playing your backyard and we'll stay in our backyard, you know, it's gone because the, the help is needed and we're there to provide help for anybody, so. Yes, 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 we do. They started in Newington and now their chiefs at Hartford and Britton, West Hartford, a lot of our guys. So I just wanted to make sure that was brought out too and, um.
Thank you.
Other than that, thank you and, uh, let's, uh, we're gonna have, uh, summer coming up in another month and a half, so let's be safe out there, uh.
Motion.
Motion with your.
I will second.
All in favor, aye, aye, thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
Okay.